Get started. We have a pretty light meeting today. So try to get out if you're fairly early for staff and council.
Almost screams out loud in one statement.
Fine, it's gonna take forever.
We'll be here till night.
We'll be here till night. First, I want to welcome and welcome Zulima, our interim city manager. It's our first meeting. So Zulima, we're excited to have her. I had my first leadership meeting with her this afternoon, so it was fantastic. I think we're going to lunch tomorrow to work on our monthly meeting. So that's something important to mention. So I don't know if you have anything you want to say before we get on.
Mayor, councilors, my inaugural meeting is your interim city manager, and I'm just pleased to be here with you this evening. And moving forward, I just look forward to working with council and the rest of city staff on our important work. And just encourage you to reach out to me if you need anything. We're here to serve.
Okay, meeting follow-up. Zulima, do you have anything? Anybody from council from last week's meeting? Sounds good. All right, let's go ahead and move on to electronic bayfield passes.
Councilors, this evening is sort of an introduction. Call it a part one to a discussion with you about our plan to phase out the requirements for City of Casper customers to have to present a paper copy of their utility bill in order to gain access to solid waste services for disposal. So again, this is intended to just give you a high-level view of what the plan is into the future as staff works out the details and gets ready to roll out full implementation. But I would invite Tom Brower and his team up to give you the overview and answer any questions here.
Tom. Good evening, mayor, councilors. Mike and Hallie join me to be my support today from Solid Waste. Cindy's on vacation, but I'm in very capable hands. If I, you know, if you stump me and I don't know what to say, I'll, I'll reach out to the experts. So, you know, the three Rs in landfill are recycle, reduce, and reuse. And part of this plan is, the big plan is, is to reduce, reduce the amount of paper that we're having to mail out and reduce some challenges we have. Because people that have paperless billing will show up to the landfill with their little phone and they'll zoom in and say, hey, I got a pass. And it lends itself to people using that pass a couple of times or three times and creates some real challenges. And so with our existing software, Munis, we've worked through, IT's been great to work with, and we have a module that we're adding on to that that will allow us when people that are from the city of Casper come to use their daily bailfill pass, they'll just hand a driver's license to. And either from their address or their name, they'll automatically reduce their landfill passes by one. So everybody will start the game with 12 landfill passes. We'll give them the benefit of the doubt. And then every time they come in, that gets reduced by one. And every month that passes and they pay their bill, it increases by one. And so, you know, they'll have a number of landfill passes. We recognize that sometimes there's a handyman, you know, or the nice older couple that lives across the street that needs something all over the landfill. And so we're going to create a very simple form that allows them to say, hey, I get permission to Bob Smith to dispose my, my waste from my, my property, and they sign their name. And so we'll make that available on the website. It'll also be very easy to work with as far as, hey, you just have to have something signed from your neighbor that allows them. And then we'll take that off the Smith's 12 landfill passes. So it's a very, it streamlines the process. It greatly reduces our need to send out paper, paper bills, saving us quite a bit of cost and reducing waste. And the third thing is it gets rid of some challenges and troubles for the staff. Because again, somebody can sit there and make a copy of their water bill, three or four of them if they got a big project. And it's very challenging with today's color photocopiers to tell, is that an original bill or is that a photocopy? And so again, this streamlines it, reduces the potential for, I hate to call it fraud, but maybe abuse of the landfill pass system. So the plan is to roll this out in September, or start training, excuse me, in September. And then the first Monday in October to roll it out and make this the process. So we're going to work very closely with Jolene and public engagement to educate the public on the process and let them know what's going to be taking place. At the same time, we're also doing some education and some querying on recycling as we work on, on the potential options and plans that'll be brought forward to you. But overall, that's the plan for getting these daily bailfill passes or dump tickets, as I used to call them in the old days when I was making a lot of runs to the solid waste facilities. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions or comments for Tom and the staff? Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks, Tom. I'm really excited about this possibility. I went up to the landfill a few weeks ago and I pulled my bill out, set it on the kitchen counter, and totally forgot to bring it with me. And thankfully, whoever was working the landfill at the time was very gracious and gave me a warning to not do it again and still let me dump my stuff off. But that would have sucked if I had to drive all the way back home and come back just because I forgot the papers. So I'm super excited about this, and I know it's got brought up over the years. So hopefully the community is as well. Two questions, I think. One is, it says a customer will be asked to provide their driver's license showing their name or address. So I just want some confirmation that in the case that somebody's current address does not match up with the address shown on their driver's license, that there won't be issues?
Shouldn't be any issues. I mean, we'll cross-check that if somebody, if we looked at their address and it said, hey, Bob Smith lives here. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I haven't gone to YDOT to get my, you know, my driver's license updated. And so, you know, we'll kind of remind them, hey, you might stop by YDOT and get your driver's license updated. But again, just like they were with you, the, the staff at, at the Scale House tries to be very flexible and cooperative and cordial. Everybody that's up there, I know, although a lot of trees up there this year, they've been nothing but exceptional because I usually try and go undercover wearing a ball cap and sunglasses because I don't want them to treat me any different just because I work for the city, so.
Yeah, I did not get the free pass because I pulled the councillor card, so.
Can I have a follow-up to Kyle's? Do you have a follow-up to your question?
Okay, just follow-up.
Is that what you just said? Does that kind of apply? How will that apply to like the snowbirds or people who have multiple? Maybe that's with their address or their, you know, not matching.
If they show us the driver's license with their name on it.
With the name on it, that's good enough.
You know, the Munis system has them as, as a client.
Okay, so they have to be on the water bill.
Hey, this is Tom Brower. Hey, Tom, you live in Evansville, you don't live in Casper. You are not a client.
Right, but I'm saying like once, maybe Arizona or the snowbirds or, you know, maybe they have a current address. So as long as their name's on that bill, then.
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Kyle, for letting me follow up to your question.
Okay. And then my second question, the electronic form in the case that somebody wants to use, you know, a neighbor or a handyman wants to use somebody's, you know, fill pass. How does that electronic form get completed? Is that through the city website? Is it something you have to print off and send someone with?
You'd have to print it off. You'd have to print it off and sign, fill in the name. It's going to be just, you know, like I envision it as a half-sheet paper where you'd either cut the paper in half or fold it and just put your name on there and then they, you know, they sign it. So I, Tom Brower, you know, have agreed that I'll drop off Judy Smith's garbage from her residence at this address she signs it. We realized it wasn't a bulletproof system. We're not worried about the one or two percent, you know. Our focus is, it's fascinating. Hallie just told me that landfill passes generate about $70,000 in revenue up there just from residents of the city of Casper. So that's a lot of $20 pickup loads of trash going across those scales.
So what if they don't have a printer and they can't print it off? Can they write like a note, like your mom's?
Sure.
Just a handstand, same thing.
No, I mean, that was really kind of my concern too. I haven't had a working printer at my house for like 10 years. So I'm gonna fix it one of these days. So I just wanted to see if there was any, you know, I don't know how often that's the case. I've never had any, I've never had a use case where I had to have someone use mine. But if it was happening more than I would have thought, yeah, I would like some degree of flexibility there just because I'm sure a lot of people like me don't, don't have a printer.
We're not going to try and make this IRS form. You know, this is going to be two sentences, you know. I underline, agree to let, underline, just close my facility and use my pass, name, address. So, you know, we'll keep it very, very simple. So if somebody did need to write out the pass to be late to school on Thursday, then it'll be just as easy as that pass is to be released.
Perfect. Well, I'm excited about it, and I think it's very generous to start everyone with a 12, you know, with some banked. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. So is the goal to go totally paperless? Because I use mine for tax records on different properties. And so, and I, I agree I should be able to do it paperless. But, and then the second part is, my driver's license has a PO box, which is a problem with our current secretary of state. But I've run into problems. I don't have a mail receptacle at my house. And so I've, because of getting notifications from YDOT on my CDL, I've run into problems not having a PO box, so.
So in answer to your first question, the decision this council will make on paperless completely for, for water bills is forthcoming. That's probably, you know, December timeframe, November timeframe where this council has that. But, you know, overall, our goal is, I mean, it was brought up some time ago, year and a half ago, that whole discussion. You know, our goal is it costs us an appreciable amount of money to mail those bills out. So if we can, we'd like to be paperless. But that's a decision that this council will make at a later time on the truly paperless. So, and even if they did, if we did go paperless, I think there should be an avenue for people to still print their bill out if they wanted to keep a, you know, a paper copying for tax records or whatever kind of records. The memo says it's either your name or your address. So, you know, I would assume that your name is on a city water and sewer bill. So if your name shows up on that city or water sewer bill, the only question they may ask is, which address is this for? And in that case, a person that maybe owns three properties that have 36 landfill passes. Because if they say they pay three separate water bills on their primary residence and the two, you know, properties they rent, then you could have, you know, three times as many landfill passes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So, just to clarify, it talks about a rollout in October, Tom? Where's that?
We're gonna do training in September. We're actually going to initiate and start this program in October. Training's fairly significant. We're talking about the possibility of using a scanner versus just keying in their name. And so we're going to do training in September, and then we will formally start this program in October of this year.
So what was the decision you said we could make?
Whether we truly go paperless on invoicing for water and sewer bills.
Oh, I see. Okay, that part of paperless. Okay, thank you.
As of October, the first Monday in October, those landfill passes will be paperless. Except if you're from Evansville Mills and Barton.
Anybody else? Thanks for the information. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Part two's coming later, it sounds like.
Yep.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, Rec Remix.
Mayor, councilors, we are really excited to provide just an information-only update to council regarding a structure change that we visited with you about in March of 2025, where staff, Nick Whips, the recreation manager at the time, currently our interim Parks and Rec Public Facilities Director, presented a plan to you all regarding how we offer passes and memberships to the community. And so you may recall that at that time, we said we want to be able to have customers have it their way. They can pick which facilities they want to belong to. They can pick which family members they want to belong to which facilities. And then in addition to that, we added a monthly membership payment option that was not offered before. And so we, I would like to invite Nick Whips and his team up to present the results of that, not only the restructuring of the passes, but also the campaign that went along with that to market to our citizens and, and the wild success that we're really excited about from that program.
Mayor, councilors, thanks for having us. Before I dive into this, I do want to introduce Christina Bat and Edwin Lures. They both were very, very heavily involved in this process. Christina being very, very knowledgeable with our scholarships and processing scholarships in ActiveNet, which is our, our processing system. And Edwin also being very knowledgeable there. But we, this was a team effort, but a lot of the legwork was done by these two. And I wanted to bring them because they'll probably have some answers to more nuanced questions if you have them. So, like we had talked about, back this spring, we presented you with an idea that we had, essentially to, to do a few things, to reiterate what Zulima had talked about, specific to making our recreational services more affordable, making them more accessible, and then also making them more customizable. That was the idea. And then as a team, we worked together to figure out how we were going to make that all come together and make it easy for our community to come in and say, I'm a mom with three kids and I want a pass to the ice arena and the aquatic center, and I'm eligible for scholarships. And we would be, we made it so that we would be able to produce exactly what the cost would be for every single person, and they could customize their experience with us. And it's been a monumental effort. With that, though, what we wanted to do, I wanted to get some key data points for you where we can show the success or the, the current success of Remix Your Rec. And we did a comparison from 2024, June 1st to August 1st, and then this year, when we rolled it out, 2025, June 1st to August 1st. So that's the, the data you're seeing here. Like Zulima mentioned, we worked very closely with Yonder Marketing and with our community engagement team. And hence Remix Your Rec was born. And it was super, super exciting. I loved the campaign. We got a lot of positive feedback, not only on how we went about it, but the, the actual, the idea behind it. Just so you know, with that advertising campaign, we did some strategic social media outreach, Oil City News. We did some billboards. There was a lot that went into it, and we worked with Yonder Marketing and, and community engagement to make sure that we were strategically getting that out there to the right people in the right way. And it produced results. So what you see here is three different data points. The first one is new membership sales. So when I say new membership sales, this is people that either didn't currently have a membership and is getting a brand-new membership, or maybe it expired two or three years ago. These are people that they just didn't re-up their membership, if that makes sense. So June 1st to August 1st, 2024, we had 515 new memberships in that timeframe last year. This year, June 1st to August 1st, 2025, you can see an almost 300-person or membership increase from last year to this year. So we're really, really excited about that. The second piece that you'll see there is our revenue increase. Last year, we brought in just under $25,000 in revenue from our membership sales in that timeframe. This year, we brought in just under $31,000 in revenue in that timeframe. And then scholarship contributions, one thing that I'm, I'm super excited about and one thing that we talked about, a big part of this was working with our nonprofit partner, the Community Recreation Foundation, to open up their scholarship opportunities, not just to youth and seniors, but to all community members of all ages if they were eligible. So what you see here is last year, they contributed in that timeframe just over $2,000 in, in scholarship funding. This year, they have contributed just over $6,000 in scholarship funding. But when we looked at these metrics across the board, we're seeing increases. And we're seeing a lot of people come in, a lot of new faces, new families, people asking questions. One other thing to mention would be in our old pass structure, we had certain passes, like three-month passes and, and things like that, where our users, especially in the summer, I'm going to get a three-month pass and utilize it at, at our outdoor pools, right? And then we don't see them ever again. Those passes drop off, our revenue drops off. The people that are using our facilities drop off over the summer. With the new structure that we have in place and having the, the monthly passes, we anticipate, and we're going to monitor this, but we anticipate that we will see a steady stream of revenue going forward because we'll have more of these individuals, maybe not all of them, but more of these individuals that will stay on because it's just a reoccurring monthly opportunity. And it's cheaper, a lot of them are getting scholarships. So our retention, we are hoping that, that retention's going to be a lot higher than in years past. With that, I think I covered everything I wanted to cover. But we're open to all questions. We're super excited about this campaign, and we, we've had a lot of positive feedback. But we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Seems there are many questions for Nick or his team?
Thanks, Nick, for all the context and the information. I'm curious, I thought I remember Zulima telling us in the past, like COVID hit, obviously rec facilities closed and stuff, and then we've been climbing out of a hole to kind of get back to baseline, membership pre-COVID. I appreciate the analysis from the last, the last year. My question is, would you consider last year's numbers to be right around pre-COVID baseline? Or was that still kind of an upward trend from us? I'm trying to figure out if there was an analysis done on how much of the marketing campaign can be attributed to the increase or if we were trending slightly up in that direction anyways.
So I can tell you, and, and we can talk about this a little further if you guys have some more context. But pre-COVID, our numbers were, were significant. And yes, we were climbing out of a hole. As compared to 2019 and now, I can pretty confidently say that we're getting very close to those pre-COVID numbers when it comes to memberships and revenue. We aren't exceeding those pre-COVID numbers. I can be very, I'm pretty confident in that. But they're like, like you said, it's that upward trend. And we're hoping to hit those pre-COVID numbers, but then exceed them. But I can get you more context with that. Absolutely.
Yep, I would, I always, I always want more than less. But I know my colleagues sometimes might get overwhelmed with it, but.
Other questions? Yeah, Michael, no, not a question, but I just want to congratulate you and your team that your numbers are very impressive. And you've obviously done, done some hard work and done some of the right things. So congratulations. And I don't know how many other council members know, but Rec Center was awarded a planning grant from the Community Health Trust for Planning for Third Spaces for Youth. So that is another.
Yeah, and that's.
Success, I think.
That's another huge success story with our nonprofit partner, the Community Recreation Foundation, where we collaboratively put in for that grant to go along with our initiative, along with making rec more accessible, but also finding more ways to reach our youth and that teen population and finding third spaces that can be way more purposeful for the youth in our community and that teen population. So we're super excited about that.
And just, just a footnote, I would add to that too, just what I've, just for council's benefit. I mean, I guess what I've kind of observed in this work around third spaces is that my personal feeling is Casper is not necessarily lacking in third spaces for youth so much as it's the two things. I think maybe the promotion of them and the, the types of vibe, if you will, that are present at the, of the third spaces. So I think those two, I think those two are going to get us a lot of mileage in terms of, of providing those for our young folks. But again, congratulations.
We're excited in the, the near future to present some of our ideas with that planning grant to all of you, so you know some of the, the progress that we're making there.
Great. Any comments or questions, Nick? Yeah, go ahead.
I didn't see it. I was going to ask something slightly off-topic, so, yeah, I want to make sure we get it. So yeah, to pile on with councillor Bond, I do, sometimes, you know, I ask questions just because I am interested in information, but sometimes I forget to give dues. So I do appreciate the hard work of all you guys. And it does look like the campaign's working really well. I'll be excited to see what the metrics look like another six months down the road. My question, again, off-topic, not related to this, but the talk of third spaces brought it up. I drove by Marion Kreiner yesterday, and it looks like quite a bit of progress has been made on the pump track and the, what else, skate park. So I was just curious if you had an update on that? I don't. Absolutely. And I'll, I'll tee it up for Edwin. I mean, we've both been very, working very closely. But Edwin, if you want to kind of give everybody an update.
Mayor, councillor, basically, we are at the, the design phase where the plans are coming together, going out to bid here pretty soon, probably next couple of months, and then work will get started after that. So very exciting with the Marion Kreiner pool, the pump track, I'm pretty sure is in. I don't know, I know about the pool. I don't necessarily know about the skate park and the pump track. Last time I was out there, skate park was almost complete, and the pump track is definitely complete, ready to go.
To give you some high-level highlights, what you can, mayor, councilors, what you can expect, and some wow factor items is going to be a pretty awesome, fun slide that is gonna bring a lot of people there. Some more of the structural stuff, the actual facility is going to be way more traffic-friendly and way more accessible, especially for those that have a hard time accessing certain spaces. And we are also playing into having the pump track and the skate park with our facility. We will have a concessions facility that will actually be facing out that way to the pump track and the skate park where folks, we're hoping to bring in whole community feel where people using that space can also come and get food from us. And that's the whole goal. So those would be some high-level things for you all in our community to, to look forward to.
Zulima, a comment?
Thank you, mayor. So just as a brief reminder, this was all made possible through a Wyoming Outdoor Recreation Grant that was generously, generously granted to the city of Casper. One of three we actually got through the Wyoming Office of Outdoor Recreation, surplus ARPA funds that were dedicated to outdoor recreation in the community. We had to write grants within a qualified census tract, and North Casper was the only area of town that qualified. And so we were able to get those three grants. And of course, Randy Norvell, our parks manager, is more in tune or involved with the park side of the project, which of course was the pump track and the skate park. So the above-ground metal skate park is completely installed and has kids on it quite regularly. I drive by there really happily, seeing the use that it's getting. And before the skate park was done, the pump track was installed and had kids on it. I saw kids on it as soon as it went up. So it's very exciting. We do have some remaining concrete work to do that will be coming in the coming weeks. And so once that portion of the project is completed, we will likely work with American Ramp Company, which was a contractor that did that portion of the improvements to Marion Kreiner Park. We will likely do a public engagement campaign, letting people know we're officially open at the park and do a quasi-ribbon cutting. But we, there are some things that need to be completed there before we felt like it's really done and, and ready to unveil whole city publicly. So, but the, but the neighborhood definitely knows it's there and it's getting great use. And that, there, there's also some lighting improvements that will be done that are not completed quite yet. But it is an exciting project, and, and we're really excited about the, the hub concept or the fact that, you know, there's a two-block radius that is dedicated to gathering and recreation for that neighborhood that I think is really exciting.
Thank you. Appreciate the update. I was wondering if I missed the ribbon cutting or something because I drove by and was like, whoa, this looks like it's almost done, so.
It went up pretty quickly.
Yeah, it really surprised me.
Yeah, it's, it's been a fun project to watch.
Drove down there on Sunday.
Yeah, I wish I had my bike when I drove.
Cool. Anybody else? Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Congratulations on the hard work today. Thank you. Okay, quarterly update with our municipal judges.
Mayor, councilors, so periodically, quarterly, the municipal judges come and give you an update, a high-level overview of what's going on in municipal court. So we'd like to invite Judges Hand and Gillespie forward to give you their update.
Good afternoon.
Hello, judges. How are you?
My mind approaching a handle.
Please. So polite, Judge.
Well, I cannot take credit for this. This is all the labors of Letitia. This is all the labors of Letitia, but I did prepare to tell you what it all means.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my understanding is, is this is kind of a question answer session. You guys want to get to know us and we'll obviously entertain any questions that you have for us. But we did want to give you a little update on the diversion program that we've been working on and how that has been working. And like I said, I did not compile these, Letitia did, but I think that you'll see about 17 or 18 offenders here. And these are people from February through June. So this is only for a few months, which is the length of time that we've had this diversion program kind of actively going. So I won't go over every single one of them, but as you can see, the yellow highlighted ones are defendants that have reoffended. But the green ones are the defendants that have actually completed treatment, so 30 days or more at CWCC. So that's actually pretty impressive to have four or five of those people in that shorter period of time actually complete treatment because we have so many of them that will go in for a short period of time and then they'll leave. Now, we do have some here in the blue that they're still in custody at the Neutronic County Detention Center. And what that means is that they've been jailed, they've been sentenced to jail, and they have not wanted to go to CWCC for treatment. They rejected any kind of treatment. So they're still incarcerated. Now, we are still tracking this. You can see that there are some defendants here that are waiting on beds, but they've been released from the Neutronic County Detention Center. And they know that if they don't show up when they're supposed to, then a warrant will be issued for them. But, so the second page is a little bit more conclusive. These are each, the first page is each individual defendant so that you can see what's going on with them. A couple of them do have active warrants or will have active warrants probably by the end of the week. So we've had 13 defendants from February through June take advantage of the release to CWCC. And out of the 13, five have completed their treatment and received credit on their fines. And what we do is we credit approximately the same one as we would do for jail, so $30 a day. So a lot of them not only have received the treatment, but they've received this credit on their fines. So how does this help the city? Well, if you look down below, we've saved 2,057 days not spent at the Neutronic County Detention Center under sentences at $147 a day. So this has saved the city $302,379, which I think is pretty good numbers for no longer than it's been going. We're also seeing that the people that are choosing to take advantage of this, they're not reoffending as much. Some of them are, some of them don't care one way or the other. But not only are they getting treatment, but they're also not reoffending as frequently as they were before. So that, I think, is probably fairly impressive. Now, what we've been doing, how we've been doing this is, as judges, we've been from the bench saying, okay, we think this person is eligible for diversion program credit. And we actually have a new order now that lists that on there. And so the front office knows whether we think that that person is eligible for diversion program credit. And the city attorney's office, of course, has to agree with us. But when we check that, then they know, they're actually given a handout that says, this is what you have to do to get diversion program credit. You have to either go to counseling, you have to go to at least 4AA or NA meetings a month and bring in proof. These are the steps that you have to take to be given this credit. And as of May, May was our highest month, 85% of the offenders that took advantage of this did not reoffend, which is, I think, incredible, especially considering that what we're talking about, most of the defendants that we're talking about with this type of thing, it's addiction issues and homelessness issues. And so I think this is fairly high numbers. So we feel like this is working very well. Our staff, we've met a number of times, not only with CWCC, but CRC and the city attorney's office. And we've kind of hauled this, I believe, to a place where we're able to do this with a little to no fuss. And I think it's, I think it's working. I think the numbers are good for no longer than we've been doing it. So that's all I have. Judge Hand?
Well, I think Judge Gillespie covered it pretty well. There is one other avenue for folks to participate in the diversion program, and that is more along the lines of a traditional diversion where the decision is made by the city attorney's office to essentially defer prosecution, ending their completion of the program. And in those cases, really, the court doesn't even get involved. Oftentimes, the case may not even be filed with the court before they participate. And as long as they complete the program, the charge is never adjudicated in the court. If there's a problem and they don't complete the program, then depending on how the city attorney has set it up, they would either refile the charge or if it was, they could have suspended the proceedings through the court and they could just file a motion to reinstate the proceedings and bring the defendant back in. So that's a, that's kind of a third way that the diversion program works. And oftentimes, yeah, behind our scenes, we don't even know. But I think, I think it's been a good program. It seems to me like the people, they're, they're interested in doing it not only because they get the credit off of their fines, but I think the recidivism rates show that they may be getting something out of it as well. And that ultimately is what we want. It's best for the community, it's best for them. So.
Guys, any questions specifically to this or anything else? As far as the courts, I know they can only say too much about the courts. I have a question about the, I think the recidivism, that's, I mean, that's a great measure and that's, those are amazing numbers there. But are your, are there any thoughts or plans to do, like kind of long term or longitudinal? I know that's hard to do sometimes with defendants in terms of how long that recidivism holds. Again, I know that's a monumental task to do that, so. Just, I'm just curious if there's been thoughts.
Yeah, I would think that that's going to probably happen as a natural result of us keeping track of this. Like Lisa said, we've only been doing this since February. So it's, we're going to take a lot more data before we really get any kind of long term results established.
So you're, so the data come, I mean, it's pretty much your data in terms of if they show up back in your court for a similar or different offense.
Correct.
And so when we meet with you guys again, we'll probably have numbers and an update for you.
Hopefully they'll go the right way.
That's right, that's right. I think that's a great thing to watch, though.
We have been watching it because we don't, you know, we do have in mind, I guess, probably secondary to justice, obviously, but we all do have in mind the city's budget. And if, you know, if we can put these people into CWCC, not only are we saving the city money, but they're getting help.
Sure.
And so to me, it seems like a win-win.
Yeah. Well, kudos to Eric and to the both of you. And I know Letitia, I'm sure there were others too that worked on this, but congratulations.
Yeah, Mayor, Counselor, if I might, yeah, I'd like to just thank the judges for their willingness to jump into this. We kind of, again, we're trailblazers in setting this up and it, I think, has been wildly successful. I can't really personally take any of the credit. My former deputy Jackie worked with the court staff and the court to get this going. But since Jackie's departed, we're still trying to keep the momentum going. And I've talked with Jim Cowser at CWCC. And so we think this will continue to just grow and blossom. As far as tracking folks, so once they're out and they get the treatment, the hope is they get hooked up with services, whether it's job training, housing, and so forth. So through the NCSJ, through the Homeless Coalition, you know, the intent is then to kind of track those folks, especially if they're in the top 30 users, to see where do they end up? Not only are they not reoffending, but hey, now they're stably housed or now they've got a job. And so I think as time goes on, we'll be able to collate and gather that information to really see not only the impact it had directly on the city's budget, but then the positive impacts it's had on these individuals and the community as a whole.
Jackie moved, right?
Yes.
She's a judge now.
Departed from our office, yes, she's got us.
So just as, just as a, for example, we have one gentleman that was affectionately termed as a frequent flyer. I mean, we literally saw him two or three times a week. And he ended up out at CRC and we've not seen him for, well, I've not seen him for three months. I don't know about you, but I've not seen him.
Depends on who we're talking to.
You know what I'm talking about. But I have not seen, I mean, we were literally seeing him two or three times a week. And he was one of those guys that, you know, homeless, addiction problems. And he would literally come down to the police station and say, take me to jail. You know, it was almost like a Holiday Inn type of thing. And very nice guy, very respectful to the court and everything, but just really had a problem. And I've not seen him for three months. I've not seen him. So I hope it's successful for him. He needed the help.
Mayor, thank you both for the information. My question is, several individuals that chose to stay at the detention center in lieu of going to treatment, was there any reasoning they gave? Any insight you have on that?
Not typically.
Not, not us personally. Typically, what we do is, is someone from Central Wyoming Counseling sits in on our encustia arrangements in the morning. And if there's somebody that is eligible, they will go up and talk to them and hopefully get a release of information so that we can then find out the nature of those conversations. But my guess is that the folks at Central Wyoming Counseling, they're the ones that probably know the reasons, and they may not be able to tell us those reasons.
Good, appreciate it.
I think a lot of it is too, that, you know, they, some of them tell us what we want to hear at the arraignments. And then, you know, we send the lady from CWCC up there and they walk right past her and they walk down the hill and they find their friends and they start drinking again. It's one of those typical, I mean, I don't know if you've ever watched Intervention, and I have watched it for a lot of years, but they talk about that rock bottom, you know, you just, they just have to be ready. And some of them getting the money off on their fines is an incentive. Some of them it's just not. But it looks like more is than isn't, so.
Yeah, I was just curious if, you know, part of it is just you got to catch someone at the right time and the right place kind of thing. But as somebody who's worked at CWCC, that seems like a lot more, you know, not only can you work down your fines, but, you know, it's a nice environment. I, you know, imagine there's a little bit more freedom flexibility there than at the detention center, so just curious. And then I have one other question, but I'm really stoked about the success of this program. And yeah, props to everyone that was involved with getting it off the ground. Looks like we're getting better outcomes and we're saving money. So we totally agree, win-win, excited about it. Looking forward to seeing how this compounds after we've got like a full year of data. Another off topic question, any trends or issues that you feel like we need to be aware of? Are you seeing things from the bench that are unique? Anything for us to, you know, be watching for as far as developing trends or anything like that?
You know, we spoke about that a few, few meetings ago. And I remember one of the things that I mentioned that is the current increase in theft, varsity.
That's what I was going to say.
And I don't know that it's going down at all. I don't have any statistics to indicate that it's where we are today compared to five months ago. But my sense is it's every bit as much of a problem now as it was then.
If not more. And we have literally some people that have, you know, 17 or 18 counts. You know, it's not just a one thing, you know, where they walked in and bought one or stole one thing. It's day after day after day and many, many counts. It's a tough thing. And the thing is, is that, you know, a lot of times we, if we know from the affidavit from the police officer what the restitution is, we order that, but a lot of times we don't know. And so then there's no restitution order and it becomes a simple matter, which is fine. But I, I personally, if I have that information, I like to order restitution. And then I make sure that the fine, if they pay their fines like they're supposed to, that the restitution is paid first.
Anybody else? Great, thank you guys for coming and sharing with us and these wonderful numbers. We're very excited about this diversion program. And I think it could be not only financially beneficial, but beneficial to the individuals.
Do you guys have any questions about anything else with the court not related to the diversion program?
Guys, you're doing great.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Appreciate your time, thank you guys. Okay, agenda review. Zulema, do we have anything we need to go over?
Mayor, don't have anything specific, but as Carter always did, I would correct to show the back page for future agenda items. Make sure that if you're expecting a conversation about something, it gets put on this list so that we can start to dock it those conversations. I also look, coming here.
Thank you. Counselors, anybody have anything before we go into Counselor Around the Table? What's the agenda, maybe it's next week? Questions you have on that? All right, let's go ahead and move into Counselor Around the Table. Matt, I'll start with you.
I don't have any.
Thanks. Mike?
Not much, I didn't, this is, nice to have some good news.
Very good news. Rec Center and Yaleville and the diversion program, I think there's a lot of good news. Absolutely. What a great way to start off.
That's right.
I'm taking all the credit.
It's already six. Jenna?
Yesterday, it's had a short little art meeting. Just kind of briefly discussed potential art gateway projects, different areas of maybe where we'd like to enhance some art. So it was just kind of, just a little over, a little over. People that were in the meeting were not there, so we couldn't fully talk, discuss all the things that we wanted to hit on. But we did that, so that was great. And then also last week, late last week, we had the River Revival meeting and we just discussed past lessons learned, discussed some sections of the river that are upcoming, that are going to be restored with different grant monies. And then the next one looks, that's up to section that's going to be doing is the Isaac Walton area, Gloucester Land. Looking forward, and then we spent a lot of time learning about hydrography of the river. So that was fun.
Thanks, Jenna. Randy, do you have anything?
I don't.
Any good news you want to share with us?
Okay, yes, I have a new grandbaby, but I'm not allowed to tell anybody anything else.
Perfect. Congratulations.
So I've attended downtown Casper Business Association meeting this morning and I just wanted to thank Captain Manus for coming and doing an update and on a lot of different topics, but pertinent on parking and unhoused and problems downtown, that type of thing. So I thought it was very useful and they definitely appreciated your comments. And so I'm wondering also about, I guess, adding to the back page Field of Dreams conversation and.
For a work session, Captain? For a work session?
Well, yeah, it's, I'm trying to request some information. I'm obviously not asking correctly, so I guess work session.
Want to give any context with the council because we just kind of give a thumbs up to put it on a work session?
Yeah, I guess I'm curious, are we looking for an update in regards to the grant for the field improvements or?
No. So this goes back to the Little League folks are trying to find out more information on, they've done a couple of different land deals. I think it started with Yessus Park and then 12th and Beverly. I think it started with Yestus Park and then 12th and Beverly. And then Field of Dreams. And so basically trying to get how all of that interplayed in particular, looking for the 1998 and 99 quitclaim deed on also Sycamore, 13th and Sycamore Ball Field. And running up through different, different agreements and leases dating, on leases, I believe, 2006, 2008. And then partial lease transfer for 2013. And then trying to get a context on what are the city doing right? What's the ball, the Little League doing right or wrong? And is, is there, are we being equitable or are they being equitable?
Same with you, Sam.
Mayor, Counselor, I'm happy to visit with you, make sure that I have the details written down correctly so that we can start to collect the information that it is that you're looking for, understand some of the context around what we're trying to understand better so that we can provide that to you. And I'm assuming maybe one of your constituents who may be asking. And then, once we present that information to you or to counsel, we can do that in an info packet, certainly. If you think it warrants a full discussion, if there's concerns, we can bring that forward in a meeting. But I think it starts with making sure that you have the correct information that you're looking for so that we can understand. But, but I need to understand the question.
It's unfortunate that some of these things were given to the interim city manager from our past city manager. He had requested some of these things, so if it's all new news, I don't know proper context without talking to department heads, because we're not supposed to do that.
Mayor, I can say that Carter did make an inquiry to me, and I received information and shared that with him. I'm not sure where it went from there. So I just want to connect with you and make sure that, that you know what it was that was provided to him. And then we can just take it from there and keep, keep going to get the information that you're looking for.
To get it to anybody else is a top secret.
I was going to throw it. It sounds like a good memo and an information packet for like a historical time, because I don't, I don't know what you're talking about, but it sounds like something that I would like to know more about. So maybe like a memo and an information packet to start, and then if we feel like we need to dig in.
And then I think what we can do is, it sounds like, because I've been kind of working with Pat a little bit with this, too, since we started a couple, two, three weeks ago, I think is what it was. Why don't you meet with Pat to get more of that information, the stuff that he was requesting, all those things, so you guys can get on the same page, if that's okay? Since he's been working with the individual. Is that fair, Pat? I know it's kind of seemed a little backwards right now, but that way you can.
Run, run kid or.
Yeah. Then that way, maybe you can get Zulema caught up, and then that we get the ball rolling now.
That works.
Okay. Anything else, Pat?
Then, hopefully we could, I don't believe personality issues should be discussed here, but I got some thoughts on when we're going through information that's been sent to us. You know, if we end up with 200 applications for process, I hope we're not waiting until, depending on one long council meeting to go through 200, to boil it down to five. But that's the way it seems to be heading. I hope that won't be the case, so.
Why don't you and I talk afterwards? We can kind of dig deep on that. Okay, awesome. Kyle?
Cool. Thanks, Mayor. I have one quick question. We don't have Liz today. She's probably the best one for it. I was just curious, was excited to see the news about this potential, I think it's called Bixby Boutique Hotel on Ash Street across from Gaslight. Cool project. I know people have been talking about the boutique hotel downtown for a long time. But I saw a lot of people asking questions about, and I have questions about the parking. And so I didn't know if that, my understanding is that that's not in the old Yellowstone District. My understanding is it's right across the street, so it doesn't have to abide by the form-based code, isn't going to go through the ARC review process for that group or anything. So I was just curious if we expect to have any action on that or if it's, will that come in front of us, I guess is my question.
Zulema, do you know anything about that? I know you're on your second day.
Mayor, unfortunately, I don't have a lot of details I obviously knew about the hotel development. But in terms of parking specifically, I'll get with Liz. I will get with Liz and make sure that we provide some information.
Go ahead, Mayor, can I, I'll get you, Jen. Oh, go ahead, Jen.
Mayor, Counselor. Yeah, so I know that they have been working on this. I've had some brief conversations with Liz and Craig around the parking. I don't want to state anything that I don't know for a fact, but they do have more information on it. Staff is working on it, so I would just echo the interim city manager's statement. Just get with Liz and get that information.
We talked about it in the ARC.
It's not in the OID, though, right?
No. No, it just came up as a topic.
So I didn't know, you know, if it's zoned appropriately and, and it doesn't need replanted or anything, I didn't know if there would be any action we need to take, at the very least, if we don't have to go through three readings of a, you know.
They're going to be using a lot of the good state law, but I understand it's just it's a state law. You, like anybody else, but not have marked spots or something.
I definitely want it on our agenda, whether it's mandated or not. Would love to have the opportunity to talk about that a little bit more.
On a work session.
Whatever's most appropriate.
We agree, because the parking concerns me. So I, I love the idea. I'm excited for it. But I, I know the state still owns the lot leased for a long-term lease. The city's done all the improvements, which is substantial, and done a nice job with it. But that potentially with 120 rooms plus meeting space plus restaurant and bar could take up a lot of that parking, so.
Take that back. I think it is in the Yellowstone District, still considered there.
I thought I reviewed the map, and I thought Ash Street was like the demarcation, but regardless, it sounds like we could all benefit from a little bit more information.
This counsel gave us put that on a work session. We're just going to know that. Okay. That's good.
Or, yeah.
Is that, are you sure?
I'll defer to staff on where it's most appropriate. I imagine it would start at a work session. I'm still not clear whether it would require any official, I don't know if they're seeking rezoning or anything like that, but.
What do you think, Zulema, should it be a work session or info packet, or what do you think?
Mayor, if it's okay with counsel, I'd like to visit with Liz a little bit, understand kind of where we're at in that process, and then, then we can advise if it seems.
I trust you all to get it to us in whatever context is most appropriate.
Okay. So strike the work sessions. Zulema's going to do a little investigating and get back to us.
Cool. Good call. And then one other thing, we spent a lot of our time last week giving Carter his flowers. But now that that jerk is gone, I want to proudly welcome Zulema as our new interim manager. Obviously, a lot of us were really struggling last week, myself included. But I also know, I think I can speak for the rest of counsel in saying that we're all really thankful to have such a deep pool of talent to draw from here within the organization to fill the vacuum in Carter's absence. We had a lot of great choices to serve as interim, and that's made this transition much easier. Zulema, you've been with the city for 26 years. You've worked in engineering and utilities before becoming risk manager, human resources manager, fleet manager, building instructors manager. So insanely well-rounded. You're a dedicated public servant. And when it was announced that you'd be serving as interim, I was glad to see a very warm reception from the community, because I know we're not the only ones that know you are a dedicated public servant. And so you spent decades building and earning that reputation. I'm looking forward to working with you over the coming weeks and months. And I have the utmost confidence that you'll be able to provide stability and cohesion in the organization until we can select a new permanent manager. So appreciate you being here. Very thankful that you considered being interim manager. And just, again, so thankful to have so much great city staff to help backfill now that Carter's walked out the door. Thank you. Looking forward to meetings in the future.
I really don't have anything at all, so I think that's it. Couple speeches. Oh, because I can just add, give him a speech next week to the uranium conference, the Global Uranium Conference. Global. So I'm really going to sharp my pencil when I give my speech. I have to make sense with, I don't know a lot about uranium, but I'm going to have to get better at that. No, so I'm looking forward to that. Wayne Healy, Hiley, he used to actually be on city council, reached out to me to ask me to give some welcome comments on that. So I'll be doing that. And then, yeah, next week I'll have more important, so that's all I got. I would like everybody to take note of the time. We've had some, we've had some pretty deep meetings, so this will be a good one. Since we had to also do the one that we were off on, so. Thanks, Zulema.
Thank you all.